Sam Mel, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
We will now convene the special city council meeting. Ms. City Attorney, please report the closed session items.
There are four items on the closed session agenda. Item number one, the city council receives a status report from its legal counsel. Items numbers two, three, and four, the city council received a status report and gave direction to its labor negotiators, and that ends the closed session report.
Thank you. Before I begin the regular city council meeting, actually, the special city meeting is now adjourned. Before I begin the regular council meeting, I would like to inform members of the public that I will be taking public comment for non-agenda public comment and for items on the agenda via our teleconference line. Those wishing to address the city council may call 562-299-6622. When I make the announcement, persons speaking are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and your comments will be recorded. Once your time has ended, the call will be immediately disconnected. For those who have submitted their comments via email, your comments will be read into the record at the appropriate times during the meeting, and no additional public comment will be permitted via teleconference. I would like to call the order of the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte Mayica, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor, before I take role, I would like to inform members of the audience that council members Alvarez and Ashton are participating in this meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Alvarez?
Present.
Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo? Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Present.
And Mayor Frometta?
Present.
Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see you. For those of you that are watching us via YouTube and Zoom, welcome to another city council meeting. I would like to start our meeting with an invocation by Sam Jivannathan. If we can please rise.
Lord, we come before you for this city council meeting. Lord, it's a privilege to come before you. Anytime when we come, we bow our heads and our hearts before you. Father, there is no privilege more than coming to your throne of grace to ask for your wisdom, guidance, and your mercy on all of us. Father God, I pray that you anoint this meeting and be with the mayor, Madam Mayor, and Mayor Protem, and all the council members, and those who are present as visitors, and that you give us wisdom, grace, and guidance to speak and receive. Father, I pray that you bless this city, this wonderful city that I've lived here for 37 years. I pray that you bless all in authority, Lord, the police department, the chief, and all the officers, the fire department, the chief, and all the firefighters, and all the medical staff in the hospitals. Father, I pray that you give them special wisdom, courage, and guidance, and for our city leaders, Lord, that you would give them firm, fair wisdom, that they would extend it firm and fairly towards everyone. Lord, I pray that you would guide us, lead us, and direct us. I know there is no authority, as you would, in any place, except that you have given them the authority, and they have the authority coming from you, that they would dispense it fairly and firmly. Father, I pray that you give us all a heart to hear and respond in a manner that's a blessing to you. I pray that you anoint this meeting and everything that takes place, every item, Lord, and we give you praise and honor and glory. We thank you for this opportunity, that you would preside, and we would give you preeminence in this meeting, and that you would allow us to conduct this in a decent and orderly manner. Thank you, Lord, and we ask this all, giving you praise and honor and glory in your precious son and our beloved Savior, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Sam. And if I can, please ask our city manager to conduct the pledge of allegiance.
Madam Mayor, it would be my honor to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Please face the flag. Pete after me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
Into the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
The God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I will like, we have some presentations to do this evening. Thank you, everybody, once again for joining us, and it is my pleasure, we have two presentations tonight. We have the Mayor's Legacy Award for Dr. Mary Stauffer, posthumously, and Mayor's Champion Award for Daryl Jackson, President of the 1020 Club. So I'm going to go downstairs and do a couple of presentations.
Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for accepting to join us here in the city of Downey. Downey lost an icon. Downey lost a woman who dedicated her life to making Downey a better place, and such is this community. You know, we are such a close-knit community. And Dr. Mary Stauffer, after delivering babies for many years, she decided to start this foundation, the Mary Stauffer Foundation, and she wanted to impact the lives of generations because to her, it was investing in children that's what mattered. And when I, when we all as a community remember Dr. Mary Stauffer, we remember her gentleness, but at the same time, she was, she was strong, and she was steady, and she knew exactly what it is she wanted to do and how she wanted to do it, and she is so endeared to all of us. I even remember one of my children, my son, receiving one of Dr. Mary Stauffer's scholarships. And over the years, it is a rough estimate, the Dr. Stauffer's Foundation gave about $5 million to children over the last 25 years. And when we talk about legacy, wow, what a tremendous legacy Dr. Stauffer did. And I just want to thank you tonight. I couldn't think of anyone, obviously, more deserving of the Mayor's Legacy Award. We will always remember Dr. Stauffer, and she will continue to inspire many, many generations in Downey. Dr. Mary R. Stauffer, on behalf of the citizens of Downey, in recognition of your selfless dedication and always going above and beyond for others, your heartfelt efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you for leaving a legacy of service and generosity in our community, Dr. Mary Stauffer. I would like to have the family come up, and you're welcome to say a few words.
On behalf of my mother, I gratefully accept this award to represent what she has done in the community and what she wanted her foundation to continue to do in perpetuity. I have with me today, I'm Janet Suzuki, I'm one of five, and my brother, Jane Stauffer, a graduate of Warren High, and Dorothy Knight, a graduate of Warren High, my daughter, Mary, who is a graduate of what was West Middle School, now the Mary R. Stauffer Middle School, and her son, Quillan Owens, and her husband, Aaron, and we have also with us today the Corporate Secretary for the Foundation, Reggie Donahue. Thank you.
Mother really lived a complete life, and thank you all for being part of that.
Thank you, and congratulations again. I would like to call Daryl Jackson. Good evening, and thank you for joining us. When every, every council meeting, we recognize members of the community that are doing great work and that are really leaving a legacy of service and that are certainly championing the community and the character traits that this community is known for. And this particular time, I wanted to recognize Mr. Daryl Jackson for the work that you have done as president and founder of the 1020 Club, which is such a great organization, such a great club in our community that focuses on inspiring young people and helping them understand their purpose, and your efforts and contributions in working with them, and certainly of the various schools within our district, and the service through other organizations made you a perfect candidate for this award. You are a retired Major League Baseball player. You were drafted by the Minnesota Twins, but you chose to attend Arizona State University on a baseball scholarship as you were growing up, and you were promoted to Major Leagues after playing only 10 weeks in minor league baseball. You played five years of Major League Baseball, and you're a vested member of MLB. You continue to do outreach with out-risk teams with the city, and you have also been a member of Gangs Out of Downey, and this is such an important organization in our community because, again, it focuses on providing those resources that the children sometimes need. I want to congratulate you this evening and present to you and present you with the Mayor's Champion Award. On behalf of the citizens of Downey, Daryl Jackson, in recognition of your outstanding citizenship and activities embracing the community of Downey, your exemplary efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you for being a champion for what is good and honorable in the city of Downey. Thank you, Daryl.
Well, I'd like to recognize everyone that's here tonight and give credit, especially our mayor, thanks for having me, and all the city council people, and our police chief, and prior chief, and everyone that's here tonight. I've been a part of Downey for a number of years. I got involved with Gangs Out of Downey back in 1990, and we go way back. Carol Rowland joined the group as her concerns for the Brookshire Park issues over there, and we've been part of this community for a long time. And to be recognized as a former Major League pitcher, you know, I'm only as good as the players behind me. And I've got guys out there catching the ball, makes it a lot less stressful for me to throw strikes and get hitters out. But if the guys behind me aren't catching the ball, and they're making errors like your Los Angeles Dodgers do at times, I, I have to try and strike everyone out. What has made my job so easy in Downey is that I have a great team behind me, and thank God for the school district, the city of Downey, the city council, the police department, and everyone working in collaboration that makes this city the great city that it is. So once again, thank you guys for having me, and good luck to your Los Angeles Dodgers this year.
Thank you. That is, that was fun. That was a great gentleman that I've had the pleasure of knowing for several years, Daryl Jackson, a great guy. I would like to begin this evening with asking my council colleagues if they have any, excuse me. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. I didn't see that. Item number three on our agenda is the presentation to the city council regarding an update on SB 1383, Organic Recycling by the League of California Cities. And Ms. Christine Guerrero, I think she's joining us, and she's on the line, is she?
That's correct. She's on, she's online. She's, can you unmute her?
All right, there we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for having me here today. I am Christine Guerrero with the, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
I'm Christine Guerrero with the League of California Cities. The league is now CalCities, is a statewide organization that represents 478 cities in the state. We provide advocacy services and education and help protect local control, local autonomy, so that cities and city councils can represent their communities. And today I've been asked to talk about SB 1383, California's Short-Lived Climate Pollutant Regulations. Next slide, please. SB 1383 was passed and signed by Governor Brown in 2016, and since then, it has gone through the regulatory process with CalRecycle, the leading agency that has been charged with putting together regulations for the state of California. SB 1383 requires the state to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by 2025. And when we're talking about organic waste, we're talking about food waste, wood chips, paper, green waste, anything like that that would be diverted from the landfills to prevent greenhouse gas emissions and methane gas emissions. The law requires the state to increase also edible food recovery by 20% by 2025, and the law grants authority for to CalRecycle to mandate specific actions to local governments to achieve these targets. Next slide, please. CalRecycle rulemaking process. So as I mentioned, the law was signed by Governor Brown in 2016, and since then, CalRecycle, the leading agency, has taken about three years, three and a half years, to interpret the legislation and put together the rules of how SB 1383 would be implemented. Those regulations weren't finalized until November of 2020, so just about three months ago, and cities are required to be compliant with SB 1383 regulations by January 1st, 2022, so only 13 months since when the rules were adopted. This is very aggressive for cities to meet. There are very complex programs and monitoring efforts, which I'll go into. This also requires significant fiscal obligations for cities. And not only do we have to be compliant with the law by 2022 on January 1st, but by 2024, cities will be required to take action against non-compliant entities, and we'll go into what some of those, who those entities are. Next slide, please. So what does SB 1383 mean for cities? As I mentioned, the regulations are going to require extensive and complex program development and monitoring and significant fiscal obligations. Specifically, the new requirements include providing organic waste, a new organic waste collection service to all residents and businesses, establishing an edible food recovery program that recovers edible food from waste streams, conducting outreach and education to all affected parties, including generator, generation haulers, facilities, edible food recovery organizations, and other city and county departments, capacity building, evaluating jurisdiction's readiness to implement 1383. This includes through the whole city and every department, procuring recycled organic waste, products like compost, mulch, and renewable natural gas, inspecting and enforcing compliance with 1383, and then maintaining accurate and extensive record-keeping of all entities for compliance. Next slide, please. So right here, I have an infographic provided by CalRecycle, which goes through all of a jurisdiction's responsibilities. So the city is going to have to implement each of these stages. You're going to have to set up an ordinance package, establish an edible food waste recovery system, cite, permit, build, or pay for new organic waste infrastructure, this includes compost facilities or anaerobic digesters, establish a new system to collect, sort, and divert the organic waste from going into landfills, and ensure compliance from local residents and businesses. And again, CalRecycle does expect that most of the costs will be borne from local government's general funds. There's not much grant funding in this. So I'm going to turn this temporarily over to Carol Rowland, and she's going to go into the specifics of these requirements and what they're going to mean for the city of Downey.
Thank you. So what does this mean for the city of Downey? We are going to have to adopt ordinances and policies. We're going to have to adopt an enforceable ordinance requiring compliance to, with various SB 1383 requirements. We're also going to have to have in place a food recovery agreement. We're also going to have to have a recovery organic waste procurement policy. The collection and processing, and it's, there's another slide. The other thing, okay, so collection and processing, and these duties are primarily going to fall with the solid waste hauler, CalMet, but it'll be in conjunction with city staff. So what this means is they're going to have to provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. Their trucks are going to have to travel farther distances because we don't have organic infrastructure currently in the area, and that's kind of a big drawback right now for the, trying to implement 1383. They're going to have to conduct root reviews of randomly selected containers. They're going to have to label all containers with SB 1383 compliant labels. They're going to have to notify generators of contamination and contamination concerns, and if you pick up a load that is contaminated, it actually contaminates the whole truck, so the truck is not able to really dispose of the organics. They're also going to be the ones between city staff and CalMet, we will, the state will only allow us to limit certain generators with waivers or space constraints. So this will affect a lot of our multi-unit families in the city. CalMet is also going to have to provide a lot of customer service. This is going to require a lot of calls. People are not going to be happy when you make changes like this, and they are going to be the primary keeper of the records because they have all of the accounts that are in the city of Downey, and that's one of the main concerns for CalRecycle is they want to be able to have all of this data in one place. We're going to have to develop an education and outreach program, and we're going to have to do a major blitz with this, and I think the early robust education program will be able to minimize the amount of future enforcement action needed. The biggest thing that I think right now for the city of Downey, after doing this for so many years, is going to be able to launch the edible food recovery program. And what that involves is, is we're going to have to arrange to recover the maximum amount of edible food for human consumption that would otherwise be disposed by contracting with a food recovery organization or service, or by self-hauling edible food to a food recovery organization. We also, in doing that planning, we have to be able to plan for the capacity, so we have to recognize the generators in our community that are going to have this recoverable food. This may entail providing funding to ensure that there's adequate capacity and collection services. Another part of this procurement, this SB 1383 is the procurement requirements, and we're going to orchestrate this with the recovered organic waste procurement policy. The city will be required to procure certain levels of compost, renewable gas used for transportation, fuels, electricity, heating applications, or pipeline injection or electricity from biomass conversion produced from organic waste. So what they're trying to do is they want us to So what they're trying to do is they want us to purchase these items so that it can kind of self-fund SB 1383. Each jurisdiction will have a minimum procurement target that is linked to its population, and CalRecycle will notify jurisdictions of their target prior to January 1st, 2022. Then the last part of it, well, not the last part, but enforcement and penalties. The city will have to take enforcement actions, including issuing notices of violation and assessing penalties specified in SB 1383 ordinance. And then the bottom line is, it's going to be a direct cost to both commercial and residents in our community. And I think in once, I think initially to get this program off the ground, because it's come at each jurisdiction so quickly, and that we have these compliances that we have to meet January 1st, 2022, I think that the city is going to have to maybe have some part-time staff to assist implementing this regulation. And I think that what really kind of hurt us, Downey really, we were kind of on board in 2019. We had already recognized our four cubic yard generators in our community. We had already sent them letters, even though we knew that we didn't have any enforcement. We were just kind of broadcasting that this is coming, be aware. Right now, with the new regulation, we're down to two cubic yards that we have to collect, so that really pretty much is everybody. And in doing that, you have to recognize, it's like if you have a party store and they have 12 employees, we have to be able to tell, we have to tell CalRecycle what those 12 employees do at lunch. How do they handle their recyclable material? So it's going to be a big endeavor, we're going to do it. AB 939, when we had curbside recycling, was a big, big feat for all of the jurisdictions. It's just going to take time, and you were going to get a lot of calls, once we start implementing it. So that concludes my part of this presentation.
Thank you. Carol, and let me ask you, when you said when you start implementing it, given that it has to, we have to meet the deadline of January 2022, what is, what is your process for implementation?
Well, you know, I've been working very closely with CalMet, which is our solid waste hauler, and we actually just had a phone conversation with the state yesterday. And we're going to proceed with baby steps, and they know that. And most of the jurisdictions are because these requirements have come so quickly, and then the pandemic has really changed things. So we're going to try probably in the beginning of 2022, maybe January, February, March, we're going to start with pilot neighborhoods, and we're going to start residential collecting organics. But we have to do a lot of outreach prior to that.
So Carol, what is this going to look like as far as the average homeowner and the average renter in our apartment? Are we going to have like another trash can that we have to maintain to deal with these? Or are we going to use the green recycling like we already do?
The plan right now is to actually just use the green waste container, and we are going to co-mingle our organics with that. And we also, in speaking with CalMet, they don't, there'll be an increase, but they don't know how significant, significant it will be because of that. The one thing with CalMet, they will not, they're not collecting the full organic requirements. What they're gathering is what grows from the ground up. So they are not going to be collecting the meat and the dairy and the solid napkins. They're just going to be basically collecting, you know, the produce, the vegetables. And so that's why they're going to be able to put it just in that one green container. And the state is aware of what we're going to be collecting here in our city, and they're willing to work with us. The other thing about SB 1383 is there's no good faith clause in it. Usually sometimes when you have a prep, when you have a mandated, they usually put in like a good faith clause. They're just going on communication with the jurisdiction. They're taking everything into consideration with the pandemic. And the biggest thing that they're looking at is for specific actions. It's like, how are we going to handle it? Are we going to make sure that we have our edible food list on our website? Are we going to have our ordinance in place? Are we going to have our procurement policy in place? They're going to evaluate that, and then they're going to hope that when things open up, say 24, 2024, 2025, because we have done all of those measures, we will stay in compliance. And then hopefully, there'll be the infrastructure that we need that we can be able to take it to the place. That's a big problem. There's not a lot of places where they can take organic recycling right now. And all of us in Southern California, all the jurisdictions are scrambling for the same transfer stations or landfills. We don't want to landfill it, but it's, we're all in the same place. But we just, it was very important for Delfino and I to make city staff and city council aware of this because this is going to be a big change in trash collection in the next four years.
If we could, you know, like, how soon does CalMet expect to be able to start taking the, you mentioned they're not going to do the meat and the dairy and the paper waste? How soon do they expect on being able to handle that?
I think it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to depend on what the state can do to develop some infrastructure that can actually be able to take those materials. Downey is not the only city that's not going to be able to take care of their, or their organic waste.
But they don't have a timeline right now?
They don't have a timeline right now.
All right, thank you.
No, and I can go into a little bit more of the next steps in the next slide.
Thank you.
I'll stay till the end if you have more questions.
Carol's correct, one of our, I'll go into some of our concerns, but the infrastructure to take the organics is a big concern for local governments. But when Carol talked about the laudable goals of trying to achieve this, I think cities are in agreement that we can start the process to sort organics and lower methane gas emissions. The problem is the aggressive timeline and the lack of funding. So in this slide, you'll see that in CalRecycle's own report, they estimate that this will cost statewide $20 billion over 11 years. And they specifically state that not only will, do they expect cities to bear the cost from their general fund, but actually ratepayers will be funding this. And they, you can see the highlighted area there, 50% of the cost would be distributed among businesses, and 50% of the cost would be distributed among households. So they expect that rates will increase as a result of the regulations. Next slide. You can go to the next slide. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the concerns that we have expressed to Cal, that CalCities has expressed to CalRecycle, the governor's office, and the legislature since SB 1383 was adopted. If you can go to the next slide. The first one is infrastructure capacity. The state just doesn't have the capacity for new organic waste processing. We don't have the anaerobic facilities, we don't have enough composting stations at that scale for every city to be able to implement this level of organic waste diversion. It also takes a lot to build these, to permit them, you have secret requirements. So this is an extensive infrastructure and capital undertaking that we're just not ready for at the state. There's no funding for local governments to implement this. Again, the cost or, according to CalRecycle, should be borne by ratepayers and by local governments. We don't know what these penalties are going to look like. Carol mentioned that by 2025, we could be penalized for not, I'm sorry, by 2022, we could be, cities could be penalized for not implementing, there is no good faith effort allowance under the regulation. So if we're not taking specific steps, we could get fined by CalRecycle. And then the scope of the regulations are very broad. They were interpreted by CalRecycle from the legislation, and we're not so certain that the legislation actually says that cities need to, local governments need to take these specific requirements. So we have talked extensively with the new governor's administration, the legislature and CalRecycle. CalRecycle has said that this isn't something that they can fix, that CalCities, you need to go to the legislature to get a legislative fix. What we're asking for is some flexibility in the regulations, moving back the timelines to give us more time. We're not saying that cities don't want to accomplish these goals. We simply need more than a year to get this, these programs implemented and started. And we also need a funding mechanism. If you go into the next slide, CalCities put together a rate survey recently. Downey's not the only one in this situation that needs to go to their hauler and, and see the increased cost. We know that 92% of cities anticipate a solid waste and recycling rate increase in the next three years. Seven in 10 of those cities anticipate a 1% to 20% increase in that time period. And almost all of the cities that responded say that the requirements under SB 1383 are what they're anticipating the rate increases will be for. So, next slide, please. What's next? CalCities, again, our conversations with the administration and the legislature continue. I have some positive news in that we have a spot bill that was just introduced on Friday. SB 619 by Senator Laird, he's up in the central coast, has agreed to author legislation, and will be looking at creating some flexibility for cities to meet these requirements. We're still not sure about the exact language on that, and hopefully we'll have some language in that soon. When we say it's a spot bill, it's intent language. But also possibly a funding mechanism to help local governments and haulers to put, to fund the requirements under 1383. So what we'll ask of the Downey City Council as we move forward, and as you hear from your residents on this and your haulers, is that you talk to your legislators. Please talk to Senator Archuleta about some of the concerns. Talk to Assemblymember Garcia about the concerns, about just the timeline of this. We knew that this would be an uphill battle pre-COVID, and the complications under the pandemic of getting this started and funding it, and also increasing rates on businesses at a time when they probably least can afford it, is something that the legislature needs to consider. So we will ask for Downey to engage in this effort as we move forward. And we will keep you posted on the developments of SB 619 as the legislative session moves. So I'm happy to take any questions. I want to thank Carol and your staff for helping us put together this presentation. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, first of all, I would like to thank Christine Guerrero. She always does a fantastic job of keeping all the city managers and all the cities apprised of policies that are coming down the pipe. And so, so thank you, Christine. You know, unfortunately, this is one of those, another state unfunded mandate, couldn't come at the worst time. It's a real challenge. I certainly concur with Christine in that we should take some sort of concerted effort to try to get some change in this legislation. I can certainly work with the, with the mayor, and I'll work with Vanya. We'll, we'll come up with some strategies for us to articulate the city's concerns and hopefully trying to get, you know, this pushed back so that, you know, we can give our local businesses or our community an opportunity to really get beyond COVID and to absorb some of the major changes that we're, you know, we're talking about. And so with that, you know, we'll take whatever other suggestions that the council has. But again, thank you, Carol, and thank you, Christine, for, for the information.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Christine. We appreciate the presentation, and certainly, Carol, thank you as well. It is really unbelievable that these mandated regulations, at the end of the day, they, they go back to the consumer. And so we do need to, as a municipality, we do need to add our efforts against SB 1383. But particularly, Carol, you mentioned there's no provision on good faith effort. And so again, these, these extraordinarily ridiculous mandates in, in expecting the city to bear the, the, the cost is really ridiculous. But anyway, I do want to echo what, what you mentioned, city manager. Downey will continue with those efforts. I don't know if my council colleagues have anything else to add regarding this presentation.
Just want to say thank you, Christine. It's nice to see you. And thank you, Carol. Thank you both.
Councilmember Alvarez or Councilmember Ashton, do you have any comments on this item?
No, thank you again, Carol and Christine for the presentation. Very, very informative.
I'll need to say that, thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to my council member to my left, and we will begin with comments, any agenda items that you may want to ask staff for, future item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend my first Keep Downey Beautiful meeting as a council member. I am grateful to KDB under the offices of Carol for the great work they've been doing in terms of the pickups. I remember taking my kids to a couple of pickups years ago. And now we're taking KDB to a new level in conjunction with our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Schindler, seeing that code enforcement is under his purview. Some members of KDB have flagged three properties in Downey. We won't share the addresses here. The intent of KDB is to reach out to the owners of these properties to see what's going on, maybe they need help. I want people to understand that we're not coming from a, here's big government, you know, trying to come down on the residents. We're concerned that perhaps there's some owners who need assistance in correcting, improving particularly the facades, but what we can see from the public streets. So we've submitted those three addresses, and had a good conversation with Mr. Schindler about the resources that may be available to assist people. This was part of one of my issues that I campaigned on, was trying to identify properties that need assistance. So we started that process, thanking to Carol and to KDB for being supportive of this. Also continuing with always trying to provide great services to our residents, I heard a lot about alleys and lighting during the campaign. So I want to let you know that the city will be looking into the possibility of working with our homeowners to provide or to work on perhaps installing sensor lights in a lot of our homes and alleys. I think that would be the less costly method of being able to provide much-needed lighting in our alleys. Then there's the issue of streetlights. We've discovered, and I want to thank my Public Works Commissioner Dorothy Pemberton for bringing this to my attention, that much-needed streetlights, particularly with the uptick in crime, property crime, much-needed streetlights throughout the city, well, much to my dissatisfaction and dismay, we discovered that while we can possibly have streetlights erected throughout the city, it would be the utility company, I think it's Southern California Edison, who would be responsible for that. But the cost, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 plus per streetlight, would have to be incurred by the residents of the city.
It's closer to seven.
Closer to 7,000, excuse me, per streetlight. So there you have it, folks. We want a streetlight, it's needed, it's $7,000. So where do we get the money from? I do not have an answer for you. I want you to know that I am looking into this to see if it's something that the city can assist with. Obviously, I see providing lighting as necessary and probably something the city should try to facilitate for us. So we're going to look into streetlights and how we can hopefully accomplish this, if at all, without passing the cost on to you, the resident. And lastly, I was able to attend via Zoom the Independent Cities Winter Session. I want to thank my colleague, the president of that organization. I want to thank my colleague, the President of that organization, Sean Ashton, for a great job. I've learned that there are three organizations that our cities tend to belong to. It's contract cities. That's for cities who contract many of their services. I believe we're fortunate that, highly fortunate, that we are not a contract city. We're an independent city, which means we have our own independent police department and fire department. We're very fortunate, as you know, that's a couple of the feathers in our hat. It makes Downey such a special place, a safe place for our community and our families. So, I found that there's the League of Cities, the Contract Cities, and Independent Cities Association. One of my primary concerns is obviously public safety. And it seems that Independent City shares that as a primary concern. These organizations all address different issues that cities have to confront. But, when it comes to public safety, I thought this was a really efficient, informative conference I was able to attend. A lot of good questions came up. And so, I wanted to thank Sean, Mr. Ashton, for leading that on behalf of our city. Thank you, sir. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Drojillo. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Checo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to welcome everyone who is watching us this evening virtually. Thank you for joining our council meeting. Some events that I attended was, one, which is our goal-setting retreat, which we all had the pleasure of attending last Tuesday. At this goal-setting retreat, we discussed issues that are important to residents, making sure that our streets are paved, making sure that we offer all the services that are important to Downey residents. So, we had a wonderful discussion of, of how to move our city forward and to help the residents here in our city as much as possible, which is important to all of us here on your city council. And like Councilmember Drojillo mentioned, last Saturday was Independent Cities, the winter seminar, which normally we would have been traveling for this seminar. But due to the pandemic, this seminar was held virtually. And I just want to say, job well done to our, the President for Independent Cities, Councilmember Ashton. I'm glad that this, this event was still held. It is one of the informative events that we have. And it's like Councilmember Drojillo mentioned, it's mostly focused on public safety. One of the speakers that presented was from Adondo Beach and he discussed the homeless situation and what the city has done in regards to that in creating fifteen pallet shelters. So, it's not just public safety. It's also homelessness. But it is a very informative seminar. So, again, I want to thank Councilmember Sean Ashton for having a great program. And that would conclude my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Ashton?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as previously mentioned, I also attended the Association Seminar. I, I had the distinct honor and pleasure of, of being the President of Independent Cities. And one of the things that I really wanted to focus on this year with, with being President was making sure that we kept our educational format as, as much, as engaging as it can be as, as possible. Normally, we have these in person, but due to the pandemic, we kind of had to transfer to a, a, a new platform where, you know, virtual platform for us. And it went well. I think we can always improve. We had quite a few good topics. One topic that, that I was the moderator on was the, was RIPA and that is the, and I just had it written down here. But it is the Racial Identity Profiling Act that was passed a couple of years ago. And basically, you know, most police departments are going to have to be on board with the, the, the extra work that needs to be done as part of it, as part of this act. For our city in Downey, it's going, it's not going to take effect until 2023, I believe, is, is the last thing, because we have a smaller police department compared to, you know, what, what, what the, the records require. But we had an opportunity to hear from another smaller police department and what they're doing. And they're already on board with, with the requirements and the reporting. And so, it's good to hear how, how it's working for other departments and, you know, what, what steps we can take here in Downey to make sure that we are doing our, our duty with that. With that said, as much as, as I would like to take as mu, as much credit for that conference as possible, I, I do have to defer a little bit of credit, actually a lot bit of credit, to my council colleague in, in the city of Culver City, Joran Erickson, who was the Chairman for the winter seminar. Usually, the President-elect is the one that's responsible for the winter seminar. I did last year's one that we attended back in, in the January of, of 2020 before the pandemic hit. But, and also I have to give some credit to our Executive Chair, Sam Olivito, who really kind of helped get everything tied together with, with this. So, other than that, that's pretty much all that I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ashton. And that we are really looking forward to our in-person conferences in the, in the near future, hopefully. Councilmember Alvarez.
Hopefully, but we'll see, we'll see how this works out.
Yes, we'll see. Councilmember Alvarez, please.
Yes, good evening to all of you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank all of our community members who spoke up in support of housing justice, in support of rent control. As we can see on the census, almost fifty-four percent of Downey are tenants. That is why the community was united and supported rent control. Only the landlords and realtors and other people were in opposition. And I want to clarify that this issue is not going away. I will bring it up to our agenda at the future time. By action of voters, it is only a matter of knowledge, teamwork, and time. My vote was nonstop proceeding this talking point. I believe in teamwork and we talked and we spoke about it, Ms. Mayor. So, again, thank you to all the community members for your support of rent control. Second point, I want to clarify something. Mayor and Council, I would like to clarify that with all your respect to the rent control item discussed at the last meeting, I received a buy from the city attorney prior to the meeting that I did not have a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act and was able to participate in the discussion. Going forward, people who call themselves attorneys inside their employment in their public attacks against me are saying I will never be able to vote on anything related to rent control because it will personally affect me. This is false and immature understanding to the nature of the area of law known as conflict of interest. By contrast, would rent control benefit in a specific targeted way? No, of course not. California's Fair Political Practices Commission has already issued opinion on this and the conclusion is that there's no conflict of interest when called the financial effect of a decision on an official indistinguishable from the effect on the public generally. In other words, rent control would affect me in the same way as it would affect the public. I wouldn't be granted any special or specific privilege contrary to what some who call themselves attorneys have claimed. Okay, let me be clear to finish this point. I am a tenant, a renter. I was also elected to the city council on a platform of rent control. I am following through a campaign promises and California has already decided that people in my situation have no conflicts of interest when it comes to rent control or any other protections for tenants. So, thank you for the community for recognizing this mere campaign against rent control. The people want rent control because of the rent is just too high. Of course, the landlords and attorneys will tag often with this misinformation, but there's no conflict of interest. So, the issue moves forward. My third point, I attend several meetings since last time, but I want to mention that I attend the Downey Democrats Meeting as well. I had the opportunity to advocate to our Congresswoman Lucille Royal Ball. Does she do more to help low-income families, including tenants? I know she previously consponsored the Rent and Mortgage Cancellation Act. Downey families need for our Congresswoman to advocate for the Rent and Mortgage Act. Fourth point, constituents have been calling me about the status of the quality of our water and the freeway expansion. I think we need to do a better job informing the community about their issues so that there's no misleading information, which many constituents are very concerned about. So, please, let's think about how we can improve on these issues and let this information out, go out well. My fifth point, Madam Mayor, I would like to suggest that we look into recognizing Curtis Care right down the street of Paramount Boulevard for the great work that they have done today, for decades in helping children with special needs. The center is led by Curtis Jenkins, who grew up in Compton, attended UCLA and has dedicated his life to helping families with special needs, children to thrive. As many know, raising a child is a challenge, especially if a child has special needs and especially during a pandemic. We need to recognize our wonderful educators who step it up and help the next generation. That is why I truly hope we can recognize the work of more educators in our community. Thank you, Curtis Care. And sixth and final point, I'm sorry I'm being really long. Madam Mayor, I would like us to, at the city council meeting, consider the establishment of a culture commission and expand sister cities around the world. In cities where they exist like Montovelo, Glendals, and Ana, culture commissions function to enrich the cultural life of the city. This can mean encouraging and showcasing art, dance, music, and more. For example, ulama, a Mexican hip ball game would be good for connecting our youth to their roots. Many youth want to learn how to play an instrument like violin, guitar, or others want to just folklorico, and we need to support them. Cultural enrichment help us all, children, parents, seniors, veterans, students, et cetera. All benefit from being exposed to opportunity to engage in cultural activities. I know we have many artists in Downey from all sorts of backgrounds, Asian, European, African, indigenous, et cetera, creators who want to share their art with the community and community members who wants to learn and grow their understanding and experience of culture in all its different forms. We need culture community for Downey and I would like to us to consider its establishment. Perhaps we can hear from staff about how can we move forward in order to improve the quality of light in this way for our residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Good evening, everybody. Once again, we had, I had a, a busy couple of weeks. How about you? Just a little, I had the pleasure, I can't wait to see everybody in person. I had the pleasure of attending several virtual events like everybody else. And so, when, when we renew in person, I've got to warn people, be careful because I may just run you over with a bunch of hugs. We are so distanced for, for so long. I took part in the TLC Annual Virtual Walk and I was, I was really excited to have done that. I know we've, we've done it together in the past and so, I was really looking forward to, to getting that done. So, TLC is such a great organization and we are very happy to participate in this event every year. We hope next year is in person. I also had the opportunity to participate in a Southeast Los Angeles Girl Scouts troop for National Peace Day. And they were, they must have been, you know, close to a hundred kids on that Zoom. And one of the things, one of the, the things that I love about having the jobs we have with our council members is being able to speak to our youth and to children. We are so fortunate to be able to hopefully give them a little perspective and motivate them. And this, the capacity, the leadership capacity that we're in allows us that opportunity. So, I was happy to talk about National Peace Day. And of course, they asked some, some questions, some probing questions of our council. And I had to say, what makes Downey such a great city is that we agree to disagree without being disagreeable with each other. And, you know, the little kids just kind of followed up with, with, with additional questions. I also had the opportunity to present to the Ten Twenty Club. And right now, the, the session was living with purpose. And let me tell you, everybody, we are living such difficult times and I am very concerned about the mental health of, of so many in our community. I always say engaged communities are strong communities and we continue navigating fif, we're in fifteen, the fifteenth month with this pandemic. And what this is doing to families and what this is doing to our youth and to our children, it's really concerning. That's why I want to mention to our community that in realizing the effects of this pandemic, we decided to partner with a whole child and we realized the, the school district provides a similar outreach opportunity to speak to mental health professionals. The city, we wanted to augment whatever services are being provided to the youth up to twenty-four years of age. And starting this month coming up, there will be, again, with now COVID permitting, with social distancing, following social distancing guidelines, they will be able to meet with a therapist free, free of charge Tuesdays and Thursdays from two to five PM at the Barbara Riley, Riley Center. And again, this is really important because as, as many of members of the community and, and we've been discussing with many of the residents, the, the concern about mental health and more children right now suffering from high incidences of depression and, and again, suicidal tendencies. So, we really need to take a look at that and I'm proud to say we are getting through with those efforts. A couple of things that I wanted to ask, oh, also, one more thing. I filmed, I had the pleasure of filming a video on street repairs. I know every council member here agrees that a lot of the concerns that our residents bring to us is streets and street repaving. And I know that we, in fact, I think Member, Councilmember Ashton ran on that platform initially several years ago. But again, the, the goal of this video is to inform our community the costs of doing this and what is the process. Because again, we may have a lot of knowledge and information, but it's no good unless we share it with our public so they understand what the process is. So, I invite you members of our community to look for the video again. It will be coming out on the social media platforms. It was released a few days ago and it will come out again tomorrow so that you can take, have, we can, we can educate ourselves about the street repaving and how that is, the streets are prioritized. A couple of items for staff, I know we continue to talk about the, the illegal dumping and I know that continues to be a work in progress. Aldo and team, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Of course, residents continue to bring about trashy situations regarding behind alleys, especially around commercial areas. And our residents continue to reach out to me, on one hand, to tell us how much they're enjoying Furman Park. Furman Park is a delight and I want to say thank you for, for the work that is being done. I also want to ask for continuation on surveillance, you know, of our parks because of the transient activity that has been brought to our attention in specific areas of certain parks. And if you can continue to, to look at that. Also, I know our chief has been discussing this with the staff and that is the continuous speed enforcement throughout our city. I know we continue to receive many, many complaints about street racing. And so if we can continue to, to look into that, that would be great. I was also going to mention what Councilmember Trujillo brought up regarding the street lighting. We realize that these are costly, costly things. And it is unfair to pass the cost on to our residents, but at the same time, you know, we wish we had a, a magic, you know, magic gold bag where we can just take, you know, funding for everything. But what I would like to see, and, and again, I, I don't know if, if this can actually move forward. Using the existing poles that we have in some parts of our city, especially those areas that we've discussed are very, very dark, it could be fairly dangerous. Is there a way to put in a, a light fixture, excuse me, a light to that existing pole?
Yeah, I'm going to defer that to our Public Works Director. I don't know if he's on the line.
Um, yes, Madam Mayor. Looking to existing poles that are existing streetlights or?
I was asking if we can add a streetlight to an existing pole.
Are, I'm, I'm assuming like a telephone pole? I mean, what, what kind of pole are you referring?
Those, those metal poles that we have?
Oh, the, the metal poles that we have are streetlights already, but.
I think utility poles, Madam Mayor. Is that what you're talking about? The ones with the electrical wiring?
Yes, I'm, yes.
Utility poles.
Utility poles, thank you.
Why, why don't I, why don't we do this? Why don't we, we, we take a look at a couple of alternatives? We'll, we'll circle back with you and the council and see what some alternatives are for potentially lighting some areas. And, you know, try to come up with some strategies. Just know that anything we come up with is going to cost money. So, you know, we just got to figure it out and how we do it. And ultimately, the, the council will give us direction on how they want to proceed.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. That concludes my comments and my asks. And thank you again, everybody, for continuing to work so hard on behalf of our residents and moving, moving our city forward. We appreciate everybody. So now we have a public hearing. I will receive public comment on the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Grant programs for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And I know Community Development will be presenting this. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report be provided by our Business Development Manager.
Mayor, before we move to the presentation, can we please take a motion and second to receive and file the publication?
Oh, yes. Can I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
City Clerk Norte, could you please take a role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Potosen Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
Thank you.
City Manager, go ahead.
Actually, I'm going to hand it off to Jessica here.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here. Tonight, I am here to present the, the annual, thank you, I'm sorry. The annual CDBG and Home Program kickoff meetings. So annually HUD provides the city with its Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. I will be calling it that throughout the presentation. And a Home Investment Partnership, also known as Home Funds. These federal grants are available for various activities, such as economic development to support public services for low and moderate income households and for affordable housing activities, among other allowable activities. To receive, as mentioned, this funding, HUD mandates we kick off our funding cycle with a series of public meetings, one of them being tonight's public hearing. And this hearing actually opens up the public comment period for CDBG and Home funding. Then this meeting is followed by three community meetings between now and April of 2021, which I will talk about further in my last slide. And then the cycle ends with the second city council public hearing scheduled tentatively for May 11th of this year to finalize the program funding for CDBG and Home. As you can see here, I've listed the current fiscal year allocation on the left column. And I have, we've projected, staff has projected an allocation for fiscal year 21, 22. This year's staff has been conservative in their projection, and we've anticipated a 3% funding cut. Staff projects a little over $1 million in CDBG Home funding, I'm sorry, CDBG funding and approximately, approximately 444,000, 444,000,000 in home funding. The city does anticipate final allocations to be announced by HUD in April. And that's usually when we hear from, from HUD in regards to our final numbers. Here, I did want to reference the fiscal year 2021 CDBG budget that was approved by the city council last May. I just want to kind of go through it a little bit to refresh your memory. As you'll note, the council approved funding for property improvement, which includes housing rehab funding that leverages our home rehabilitation funding that I will speak about in the next slide. In addition, public services is funded to low and moderate income residents, which includes funding to some city programs, including the city senior nutrition program as well as the library's literacy program. In addition, there, this funding for partnerships with organizations such as the ARC for job training and Downey Unified School District for the 1020 Club, which we've talked about today. And the whole child, I'm sorry, the NTLC, which provides services to youth and, and families. In addition, the budget also includes HUD Section 108 loan payments, which have provided the city with low-cost, long-term financing for economic and community development projects. And finally, the budget includes the general administration costs. Here you'll see the home budget approved last year in May. Here, you will see the funding for cities, the city's housing rehab program in addition to rental assistance. And this specific amount was approved for those affected by COVID last, this fiscal year.
And that was, that was separate from the CARES Act money, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's in addition to the CARES Act money, yes. The cities, if you'll see Affordable Housing Partnership, this is the city's required 15% Affordable Housing Partnership set aside money. And then we go on to funding for homeless prevention services, which the city partners with the whole child to provide. And finally, general administration costs. So as mentioned previously, staff has scheduled three meetings. Unfortunately, because of COVID, these meetings will be virtual. And they have been scheduled for various days and times to allow for community members to be able to, to participate in hopefully one of the three meetings. We do plan to market the community meetings as in previous years to include the city's social media platforms, also including community groups such as Positively Downey, which we now are, have a very good relationship with, and so they, they post a lot of things for, for the city. The Nextdoor app, Neighborhood Watch groups, as well as in print, both in the Downey Patriot and Downey Latino. Via email to our department's comprehensive list that includes the clergy council, as well as rental property managers and owners. The city's website, of course, and if needed, we can provide door hangers for the community to, to receive. This does conclude staff report, and I am available for any questions, if you have any.
Do any of my council colleagues have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So can we go back to the home, the page with the home funding? Yeah, right there. So that's a total of 933,000, but on the very beginning, you had that our expected allocation was 400,000? So what did the extra 500,000 come from?
We do have a balance that we can move forward in our budget, and so that's where we get that extra funding from to.
Okay, so this is just carryover funding that was?
Carry-on to funding, exactly.
Okay, so then my second question would be, how? What, I, I feel that that 590,000 towards housing rehabilitation right now in this environment is really not a, a good use of our money. You know, we have people that, that are struggling with paying rents and that. And, you know, we have a rental assistance program, but it's getting, you know, a smaller chunk of the, of the pot for this. And I feel that we could be getting more, more money towards the rental assistance and doing things to, to help those residents that, that are really struggling to be able to make their, their monthly payments. Is there a way that we can switch some of the fundings for this?
Councilmember Ashton, we, staff can work with the city manager's office and council members in regards to that.
Okay, and then one other thing, can we go back one more page from this? To the CBDG funding? Okay, so I'm looking at the, the Aspire program. So I, I've been told that, that the district's going to be taking over the Aspire program after June, correct? Or after July?
At this point, we're, we're in negotiations with them, so we're, we're looking at that. If, in the event that happens, yes, that money would, would potentially be freed up.
And to, to be used again to help with, with people that, that are in need right now?
Absolutely. All these programs are to help people in need. So one of the things that, you mentioned the rehab program. Tonight, we also had Councilmember Trujillo talk about targeting specific properties in the city that may need some, some cleanup, right? So we have to balance those things in terms of where we pay for some of these stuff. So although all of these things are movable, what we're doing tonight is just kind of launching things. We'll be back to you with specifics, and that's when you guys will be able to then really dive into the details in terms of where you want it. This is merely just a sort of the kickoff public hearing process. But it's noted that there are some potential changes that you would like to make. So, and, and then we'll, we'll bring those things back. We want to make sure that as many of the, the goals of each individual council members are achieved through this process.
I, I just, again, I'm just calling this out because, you know, we, we get a couple of times to kind of do this. And I just want to make sure that, that we're doing what we can to help our residents during this pandemic. So, you know, before I move on, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. You know, again, it's really helpful that, that you're bringing this to us. And, and I like the adaptation that we're using to, to be able to hold these meetings virtually as much as possible and, and to get as much involvement from the community as, as much as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. In, in the past, you said, Jessica, based on projections, you're looking at a 3% cut. Now, is this pretty consistent to what we've seen the last handful of years? And again, the reason of my question is because looking at this financial landscape that makes a lot of people very uncertain.
Yes, with this particular funding source, what we do is we go back and we track what we've been allocated over the last 10 to 12 years. And, and we focus the trends and then forecast out. And so we, we always veer on the conservative side. So we've seen over that time roughly a 3% cut. We hope that we, we don't get cut by 3%, but once again, we, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Sure, okay. Well, thank you. We look forward to, oh, yes, yes, Councilmember Trujillo.
I'm just curious, the HUD Section 108 loan payments, do we know what that was used for, these loans?
So we make three separate pay, three separate principal payments and with their interest. And that is for having brought the Fiat dealership to the city, you know, as well as keeping Nissan in the community. And we created 31 jobs with Nissan staying in the community. And then the final payment is towards funding that we use to leverage county funds in the construction of Rancho South Campus.
So affordable housing i- is one of the big issues of concern, I think, to the residents and to members of this council. And I don't see anything in here that talks about expanding permanent affordable housing. I mean, it looks like we want to rehabilitate what's already there, right? But I don't see anything about expanding permanent affordable housing. And I thought that when we got to the CDVG, this is where we're going to be able to, and maybe I'm just going to find out that I was completely wrong. But I thought this is where we would be able to find money to buy real estate that we can then work in conjunction with a developer to build more affordable housing. So am I, are we not doing that?
No, so, so you're, you're, those are all sort of good, good questions. So if you look at the total allocation, it's about $1 million that we get. It's really not a whole lot of money. Most of the money, if you see, goes, goes to these, a lot of money goes to social service programs in the city, right? So, and then what you look at is, okay, is there potential for us to leverage this money by taking another Section 108 loan, which is what you just pointed out with, right? Even that amount of money is not a significant, and we're actually at our capacity in terms of what we can borrow against. So Section 108, what they do is they, is you can borrow X amount of, X amount of dollars based on your annual allocation, right? So I, I understand what you're saying. There, there isn't that kind of money in order to tackle affordable housing with the average affordable housing unit being about $450,000. So you would essentially use this up, you know, really, really quickly. So we're saying, okay, how can we help the most amount of people in the community with the amount of money we have? Affordable housing certainly is a big issue. There are other ways to get there. One of the things at our next council meeting, we're going to be selecting a subcommittee to look at some of those things. But you're absolutely correct that there are, there are potential tools out there that we have to, to, to look at and to strategize. You would think, you know, because of the title Community Development Block Grant, that this would be it. But not, not always the case unless you're willing to, you know, cut some of these, these programs, which are really, really tough. And at the end of the day, what are you really getting? You're getting maybe a unit, if you're lucky. So what we're trying to do is find under other funding sources to try to, to do that. For example, you know, tax credits, right? Leveraging money with the county in order to purchase property and then go after tax credits to help fund those projects. Kind of what we did with the View Downtown.
Yes.
So, so we will, we'll, we'll bring those back, but those are all very good questions, so, yeah.
And I had another question. I'm curious, what is our loan capacity or bonding capacity for these 108 loans?
Go, you, you have that, ma'am.
I do have that, sir. Give me one second. So currently, we, we, let's see, we do have those loans I, I talked about. And so let's see, our, we may, we can apply for an additional loan not to exceed about $1,038,000.
$1,038,000?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to, I mean, how do we create more? Is, is there, I've heard of something where one city can go to another city and try to get some of their, see, trade, right?
Yeah, so, yes, and I, I've done this, you know, before in my past life as a community development director. So, so yes, there, there, there are times when other cities, for example, have excess CDVG money. And so because of all the red tape that's involved in these, it's not easy to spend, for example. So some cities will say, I will trade you general fund dollars. So I'll sell you our CDVG money for, you know, at, at 50 cents on the dollar or 75 cents on the dollar, whatever it may be. So, so some of these, some cities can, can, will do that. That's not as prevalent as it used to be, but occasionally it is out there. But what, most people are trying to preserve their general fund money.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay, but it is?
It is a tool that, that some cities have, have used, so yes.
50 cents on the dollar sounds really good.
Yeah.
Right, so if, if we can maybe look into?
We will look at it, yes.
See which ones are willing to trade.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm looking for ways to expand affordable housing
Yes.
in, in Downey. So that's why. So that's why I have this question.
So.
Thank you very much. Great presentation, Jessica.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Mayor, for them? Okay, well, it looks like, thank you.
I'm Madam Mayor.
Yes?
I wanted to ask, uh, I have a question. Is there any way that we can implement some help for homeowners? Because I got a call just two days ago, uh, requesting for help. Because, um, they're, they need to pay their mortgage, absolutely. But, um, the banks are not, uh, helping them as much as they need to. So is there any way that we can get, um, in, into this so we can help homeowners as well?
I will defer to, um, our city manager.
So, um, you know, the, the challenge with, with, with the pandemic right now is there's so much need and there's only so many resources that we, we have. So, but that said, you know, when somebody calls City Hall, uh, whether it's a homeowner or a tenant, we're always going to try to provide them and connect them with the, with the assistance that we can provide. And so my recommendation is that if you have somebody that's a homeowner that's in need, to please forward them to, to, to staff, because there are resources that we can connect them with. Uh, obviously, you know, the, the city doesn't have the ability to, to make somebody's mortgage payment. And we don't have that kind of program right now where we've, we've chosen to assist, uh, tenants and renters, and that's what we're doing. And so what we, the best thing to do is, is connect them with us. There are, uh, resources and sometimes we can assist them in, in, in getting the help that they need or some available federal or state program or, or, or county program that may be assistance. So, um, I, I would encourage you to send them our way.
Thank you so much, Gilbert, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you. All right, well, that, that think that's, that's all we have. I don't have any other comments or questions. Um, I believe now we go ahead and open up the item for public comment. Thank you, Jessica. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Um, I want to also remind, uh, individuals that would like to call, um, the, the, the rules of, um, of sticking to the topic apply. Uh, and if the call is disruptive, um, it will be terminated. City Clerk Director, did we receive any written correspondence about this item?
We did not, mayor.
Do we have speakers on the phone?
Uh, yes, uh, let me take the first call here. Uh, yes, please, uh, state your name and begin speaking, you have three minutes. Hello, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
All right, sorry. Hey, my name is, uh, Zach and, uh, thank you to the council and staff for the presentation tonight. Um, I just wanted to mention, I guess, oops, sorry. Is there an echo or?
You may need to lower the volume on your device so you hear no echo.
Sorry, um, so I just wanted to say for the, um, budget under preservation and improvement, I was just wondering if the Downey Conservancy could be included in that? Um, they do a great job on Facebook and social media and I think they should be consulted for any future redevelopment. Um, and if any money could be managed, if I could give them, uh, to give them resources to research and do that kind of stuff for historic buildings, um, that'd be great. So thanks.
Thank you. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Pamela Zoll.
Go ahead. Can you?
Pamela Zoll.
Can you hear me?
Thank you so much, um, council.
Can you please lower the volume on your device?
Can you hear me better?
Yes, if you, um, lower the volume on your device, um, you can go ahead and speak, y- your time is running.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, now, I've been a hard time hearing.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
I think I'm gonna have to call back because I cannot hear you guys.
We can hear you, if you go ahead, you can continue speaking.
My first name is Pamela, last name is Zoll. I was calling, um, to thank, uh, the council for hosting, having this event online. I truly appreciate as a working mom and as a community member of Downey. I would like to also thank the TLC for, for having the, um, the 5K. I actually, um, TLC has helped me quite a lot during this past, uh, couple of months. And I'm really thankful for the community you're having in.
Okay, ma'am, this is, uh, the public comment for the public hearing item on the agenda related to the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Grant. Do you have any comments regarding this item? Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, Juan, Juan Domingo. Hello?
Yes.
Si, en español, please.
Okay, um, un momento. Solamente le quiero decir, es, estamos ahorita en, um,
Si, 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 yo sé, lo que están hablando del problema de dinero del gran a la, a la, a la ciudad.
Okay, un momento, por favor. Okay, puede proceder.
Okay. Si, buenas noches.
Yes, good evening.
Oh, yo estaba mirando el, el gran que le mandaron a la ciudad y, y cómo lo repartieron.
I was looking at the plan that you sent to the city and how it was divided.
Y sinceramente, que eso, eso es un fraude para, para, para la comunidad. Porque ustedes tienen que poner en primer lugar más dinero en donde hace falta.
Um, I believe that is a fraud to the city. You first of all have to place more money where it is needed.
Están dejando las escuelas casi sin dinero. Están dejando a las personas que son dueños de casa y los renteros de último con poco dinero.
Uh, you are.
Y están dando para programas casi medio millón de dólares.
You are leaving the schools and, um, uh, renters and homeowners without any money?
Ahí me estaba, ahí estaba mirando que la mitad dice que no hay dinero para muchas cosas, pero para su sueldo, de, de más de 300 mil dólares sí hay dinero. ¿Por qué no les recortamos la mitad de su sueldo mejor?
Señor, e- este, e- el tema de ahorita tiene que ver con.
No, pero ese es el tema, él está hablando de que no hay dinero de ese, del paquete ese, del gran a la gente con la, con los problemas.
Oh, okay. So he's saying that, um, the problem is that we're saying that there's no money and he knows we're talking about the grant.
Entonces, ¿por qué hay dinero para, por qué hay dinero, mucho dinero para otros programas? Y para los programas necesitados no hay dinero, ¿por qué? Explícame, ¿por qué?
Why is there money, there isn't any money for certain programs? But there's only money for certain programs, but there's no money for what is needed? Explain to me why.
Entonces, hay que decir a la mitad que sí hay dinero. Sí hay dinero para unas cosas que a ellos les conviene, pero la necesidad, la necesitamos las personas mayores y en las escuelas.
Um, so we must say that, um, there is money, but only for certain things. But we need money for seniors and for the schools.
Y mejor que explique mejor las cosas cómo se reparte el dinero porque empezó a titubear.
And to give a better explanation of how the money is divided.
A todos los concejales les digo, trabajen por la comunidad, no trabajen, no trabajen por, por, por otras personas. Trabaja, la comunidad necesita dinero y aquí se está viendo que es un fraude lo que están haciendo ahí.
I say that you must work with the community and not against the community and I believe that what's going on is fraud.
Que tengan buenas noches y ayuden a los necesitados, a las personas mayores que trabajaron mucho en esta ciudad.
Have a good evening and help the community members, uh, that are elderly and have worked very hard in the community. Gracias. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches.
Yes, go ahead.
Buenas noches. ¿Puede escucharme? Buenas noches.
Yes, go ahead.
A, a, aquel, aquel señor, Mr. Livas, es mentiroso. Escuche bien todos.
Uh, good, let me translate, um, hello, good evening, um.
Housing programs, both under federal government and state of California laws, negotiate that there is a shortage of suitable housing. However, it is to your great interest that HUD, if you believe that you have experienced discrimination in housing or believe that the city of Downey administrator, Mr. Livas, is stealing our money, you may either file a lawsuit or you may file a complaint with HUD. Not later than one year, mendigo, after the discriminatory acts has occurred with HUD. Legal remedies on our behalf under 42 U.S.C. Section 3610, are you listening? And 3612. So, again, Livas, stop being a moron and lying, you fucking bullshitter. Mendigo. You hear that?
Mr. Herman, please stay on topic.
HUD Section 108, did you hear that? Home investments, fraud in abusive ways. Put the mic on, lady, I can't hear myself. Mr. Metta, move your hand from your mouth and tell Mr. Livas to stop sweating his bald head off and pay attention. The public is telling you que son cabrones mendigos y no escuchan bien. Porque dices cosas que no son la verdad cuando está robando abajo de toda la pinche palabra que dicen ahorita. Qué tal dar, míralo, cabrón. Es mi tiempo, vaya con Dios, chingados.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Carlos Rannabar. I was calling to, uh, support Councilman Ashton's idea of reapportioning some of those funds from rehabilitation into, uh, renter assistance. I think that's a good idea. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like we have a lawyer here. Yes, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Mr. Spindler, please stay on topic or else we will disconnect.
I'm here to speak, can you hear me? Are you here?
If he doesn't get to the topic, then we're gonna disconnect.
You're being warned, please stay on topic or you'll be disconnected.
About the green deal, the wonderful plan for American socialism. Yes, it's very nice. And recycling expensive garbage.
Hello, um, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Is it my turn?
Yes, go ahead.
Buenas noches, yo soy la maestra Ibarra. Soy residente de esta ciudad hace casi 20 años. Me mudé aquí de la ciudad de Redondo Beach. Um, y pensé que esta ciudad iba a ser muy buena para que mis hijos crecieran y atendieran buenas escuelas.
Okay, ma'am, um.
Uh, estoy hablando hoy sobre, um, el grants que, que estaban hablando, que se habló hoy pues en, en, en la junta. Y yo también estoy de acuerdo con el señor que acá, los dos señores que acaban de hablar ahorita.
Ma'am, can you, uh, let me translate for you?
De COVID, que mucha gente ha perdido sus trabajos, que tienen unemployment, que no tienen comida, no tienen manera de cómo pagar la renta. Y aún así, el señor Áviles o Ávila, no sé cómo sea apellido, recibe un 5% de, de aumento a su salario, ¿cómo puede ser? ¿Son ustedes unos falsantes en aceptar eso? ¿Ustedes que están ahí en el concilio? Sí, y escuchen bien porque se están hablando entre sí y no ponen atención a, a, a los votantes de la ciudad.
Ma'am, you need to, um, wait until the city clerk can translate your comments. Tienes que esperar para que sus comentarios sean traducidos, por favor.
Who's translating, from Menta, she does pretty good. You don't have to pay a, an extra translator.
Are you, are you speaking in English now?
I can, if I want to. I would like to hear, I would like to see the, like, Downey council working together and accepting who the people brought there, who the people voted for, like Ms. Álvarez. Why are you guys on a witch hunt? Why is it always Catherine Álvarez this, Catherine Álvarez that on the Downey Patriot? You think that we don't know that you guys are conspiring to debunk her seat?
Ma'am, you need to stay on topic.
With Eric or the guy from, from the Downey Patriot?
Ma'am, you need to stay on topic or you will be disconnected.
Negative misinformation.
Thank you. Mind, we have to remind members of our public to please stay on topic. When we have, um, public comment, we want to get through the items on the agenda. And for those of you that can speak English, uh, and you choose to speak Spanish during public comment, I will ask you to please then pause so that we can provide the, uh, translating services for members of the community that only speak English. So if you can please, um, allow us to do that, we would greatly appreciate it. Uh, city clerk, do we have any other speakers on the phone?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, hello, good evening, Downey council. Um, so it's redalfo, you probably recognize my voice by now. So, last time I called in about this item, um, you know, I really wanted to communicate a lot of information and I think it's really important. So I, I ask you, for the sake of your constituents, please, this community development block grant, you know, not, you shouldn't just accept it and, you know, of course you should get feedback from the community, but you should also be thinking about like. but you should also be thinking about like, you know, where is this money coming from? So it's clear that on the Zoom meeting, we have the Columbia Memorial Basin. So we're all very proud of Downey's history and, you know, creating all these great space programs. And it's coming from the same place as the Community Development Block Grant. So that is from congressional appropriations. It's not coming from the money that you send over to the IRS, or that some people send to IRS. It's coming from the appropriations. What does that mean? You really need to understand this in the context of the Community Development Block Grant so that you can better serve the community. So what the Community Development Block Grant money is coming from, from being appropriated and authorized into existence. That means that the Congress decides how much money to spend into existence, and then the president approves, and then you get it. So that money that's coming to fight poverty and to build affordable housing, as Mr. Trillo mentioned, is very important to him and all these other programs, that's money that is willed into existence. And that should be a lot more of that money. You need to demand that now that the Democrats have complete control of the federal government, they should appropriate more money for communities like Downey. This would be good for us. Why should only the banks get the printed money? No, the people deserve some of that, a lot of it. So to guide you in this, please read the following book, The Deficit Myth: Modern Monetary Theory and the Birth of the People's Economy. The Deficit Myth: Modern Monetary Theory and the Birth of the People's Economy, by Professor Stephanie Kelton, an economics book. Very important for you to understand where the Community Development Block Grant is coming from so that you can advocate for a heck of a lot money for Downing. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. I will entertain a motion in a second to close public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
In a second. The order by the mayor? We will go ahead and take... Go ahead, Gilbert.
Madam Mayor, you know, we just had a goal setting recently where the facilitator said, you know, "Don't have an untruth go unanswered," right? The amount of money that we get, a million dollars from CDBG, we had one caller saying, you know, "We're not doing anything for the community." But if you look at all the services that we provide to the community with that block grant, it's pretty amazing the things that we do with that money. We're assisting, first of all, one, we should give money to the school district. The school district is a separate entity that has their own lot of money. That said, there are two programs in there that we assist with our money that go directly to Downey Unified School District students, and they are the most vulnerable and at-risk kids and families. If those aren't people that we shouldn't be assisting, then I don't know what is, right? There are a number of programs that we assist in order to prevent people from being homeless. It's better to spend the money upfront on a program than on the back end. It costs you ten times as much on the back end than on the front end. And so, you know, many of the things that we've done over the year in a pandemic, when our resources have, our resource revenues have been less than that, we've been able still to provide the number of programs that we have is pretty amazing, whether it's senior meals, free Wi-Fi, food distribution, rental assistance. All of those programs are been, come into fruition over the last year or so, and we're continuing to do that, this particular year. We've had this rental, the affordable housing issues that we've talked about. And we'll continue to provide that. We're working right now with the county for seventy-five units of homeless veterans housing that we're doing. And we're also working on transportation corridor that is going to address a corridor of the most disenfranchised transportation folks up and down the county, which is something that the city has been working on, and we're inching closer to that. And it's one of the county's eight-by-twenty-eight pillar programs, which are big, robust programs that we're doing. So in terms of where the money is going, it's actually going to the most vulnerable residents in the city that we've been able to provide in many, many years. So it's just not accurate that the money isn't going to where it should be going. And if you drill down on those various programs of where it's going, then it's something that you'll see that it certainly is going to where it should go. Now, are there tweaks that you can make? Again, this is just launching up. Yes, if the council so chooses to move more money into rental assistance programs, we can certainly do that. And you'll have an opportunity to do that. This is just a discussion purpose. We have nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of money that was allocated for rental assistance. And to, at this point, there's still money in that pot. It hasn't all been used up. So it's not like, you know, it's, you know, people are banging down the doors. We know that people need the money. We've been redoubling our efforts. We actually are looking at maybe even going back to those folks that received one month's payment and maybe giving them another month because we're not getting enough people to participate in it. Unfortunately, with federal programs, is that you have to go through the hoops, meaning people have applied, but they haven't followed up. And that's that we've reached out and tried to assist people. And if we can get them, we have Spanish speakers, we can sit down with them. So we will continue to redouble, triple, quadruple our efforts to make sure that we get that money out the door. But I just didn't want to go through the meeting without saying that we're, that the efforts that the council has made have not been going to those that are vulnerable in the community. So anyway, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, city manager. Very, very well taken. We have many programs, such as a senior program that I had the pleasure of attending earlier this week, excuse me, late last week. And again, we look at where the monies are going. A million dollars is not a tremendous amount of money, but yet there are so many needs and so many social programs that make Downey the city it is. And so we can, and I would certainly consider looking at some redistribution. But at the same time, we have to balance having the quality of life that we all desire in this community with the needs of our most vulnerable. So it's a very, very tricky balancing act.
Just one last thing. There was another comment about the Columbia Memorial Space Center. It's extremely important that we provide... Latino students are one of the most underrepresented in STEM-related fields. And we have really made a concerted effort to increase the number of scientists, doctors, others that are, that are, that need to get into STEM field. And what we're doing there with robotics and kids is crucial, especially right now in COVID when kids don't have an opportunity doing online instruction and what we're doing in our library. There's just, there's just an enormous amount of things that are going on, given the limited resources that we have. And so I do want to thank staff because they're the ones that are on the front lines doing this day in and day out. And we'll continue to do it despite what you've heard tonight. We'll continue to do the good work, so.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. So there's a family guidance center here in Downey. It's called Community Family Guidance Center. They help, I believe I've talked to Aldo about this organization. They help children deal with mental and emotional issues. I was curious to see if they were gonna be invited to the hearings to provide some input or get information.
Yes, Mayor Potem. They'll be invited. They'll also be invited to apply for funding as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are done with our comments. Now we'll entertain a motion to close our comment. Did we do that?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
You did close the public.
I did, I did, I did. Yes, thank you, thank you. Now...
This is a non-action item, right? Just for a public comment, so there's no action taken by the council at this time.
Okay.
The item will be coming back.
That's right. Thank you. So now is the time for non-agenda public comment. There was a bit of a confusion there. Thank you for clarifying, Madam City Attorney. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts or disturbs or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you're participating telephonically. I will ask Madam City Attorney to give a warning if the caller is being disruptive or disturbing the meeting and not staying on topic. And after that warning, the call will be disconnected. I want to make that clear. Each speaker shall have three minutes to address the council on the issues that are within the city's jurisdiction. And since we're under a federal, state, and local emergency declaration, and Los Angeles County is safer at work and in the community order, I will limit this non-agenda public comment.
Councilmember Alvarez's appointed commissioners are an extension of herself. I was very disappointed to learn of the author of an op-ed attacking me was actually one of Ms. Alvarez's commissioners. It appears Ms. Alvarez is either rubber stamping the behavior of her commissioner or she's ignorant, none of which is behavior a council member should display. Ms. Alvarez's role has changed from a constituent to an elected official. Make no mistake that a large and diverse group of district reconstituents are watching, cross-checking, and analyzing every action or inaction of Councilmember Alvarez. A recent social media post by Councilmember Alvarez alluded to the concept of karma. Seeing as a fact that I practice Hinduism, I'm very familiar with the concept of karma. One has to wonder how karma will play out for Councilmember Alvarez. With that said, Councilmember Alvarez, I have lived your story, I am here, and I see right through you. Karma is here knocking on your door. Thank you and have a blessed evening.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
What? I can't hear. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir.
What? Put up the mic. Am I on?
Yes, Mr. Herman. Go ahead.
Am I on? Am I on?
Mr. Herman, start speaking. If not, we'll be disconnecting.
Am I on?
First warning, Mr. Herman. Start speaking or we're disconnecting.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, Juan Rodriguez.
Sí, un momento.
Buenas noches.
Sí, un momento, por favor.
Sí.
Okay, puede proceder. ¿Cuál es su nombre?
Juan Rodriguez.
Juan Rodríguez?
Yep.
Okay. Sí, proceda.
Sí, buenas noches a todo el concilio que está sentado ahí.
Good evening to all the council members sitting here.
Frometta, usted, yo le voy a decir algo. Usted es muy mentirosa con el programa del control de renta. Ustedes no están ayudando a la comunidad.
Frometta, you are not being truthful about the renters assistance program. You are not helping the community.
Yo y mi esposa le llegamos a nueve personas con problemas de la renta, y ustedes no le han dado ninguna contestación para atrás.
My wife...
Y ustedes eran novecientos veintitrés, y yo quiero pruebas de estas novecientos veintitrés.
My wife and I helped nine people to apply for the renters assistance program, and you have not contacted them at all.
La comunidad quiere pruebas si es verdad que ustedes están ayudando con el problema de los dueños de casa y de los renteros.
The community wants to know if you are really helping tenants and homeowners in the community.
Otra cosa también, ustedes no le están dando información a la comunidad.
Another thing, you are not giving members of the community any information?
Sobre los programas que hay para ayudar a las personas de bajo recurso, como el control de renta y también a los dueños de casa.
For the programs for low-income families, tenants, and homeowners.
El gobierno federal a ustedes le da un dinero para que hagan flyers, hagan diferentes publicaciones para ayudar a la comunidad, y ustedes no lo hacen.
The federal government gives you funding so that you can create flyers and give out information to the community, but you don't do that.
Ustedes mejor lo prefieren regresar para atrás. Prefieren darle dinero a un periódico que habla solo en contra de las personas que quieren ayudar a esta comunidad de Downey.
You rather give the money to a newspaper that speaks poorly about individuals that wanna help the community.
Como es el periódico, el pacheco, el periódico que ustedes distribuyen los viernes, yo le mandé foto a la Álvarez, todo tirado en la calle, es basura. Y tengo cincuenta fotos.
Like the Patriot, I send pictures and they were scattered through the streets, fifty pictures.
También es, para eso sí hay dinero, para darle a esas publicaciones que solo es basura. Nowhere va a un viernes para que usted vea cómo está el periódico tirado todo en la calle, es basura. Y todos los dueños de casa se están quejando.
For that, you have money, to give money to the newspaper that is scattered all over the city on the ground.
La comunidad necesita que ustedes se pongan a trabajar a favor de la comunidad, no a favor de los intereses de otras personas, que ustedes le dejen favores.
Permítame un momentito. ¿Puede decir otra vez lo que dijo?
Que la comunidad necesita que ustedes los ayuden.
The community needs you to help them.
Que los ayuden porque ustedes están a favor de otra gente que los ayuda ustedes cuando van a las elecciones.
Because you are...
Y es un favor que se tiene que regresar para atrás.
Because you are only in favor of other people who help you when you are running for election.
Pacheco, ustedes lo apoyan mucha gente racista de esta ciudad, como es Bartolo, que tenía su propiedad de apartamento.
Pacheco, you support other people in the community such as Bartolo who had apartments?
Tenía varias propagandas ustedes de su campaña, y nosotros, yo se las mandé a quitar.
He was posting your political signs, and I had them removed.
Igual que ustedes como ponen camioneta cuando están en sus elecciones afuera del banco de comida, dándose publicidad, den publicidad con la ayuda de la ciudad también.
Just like you post your political signs on vans next to the food bank to help yourselves.
A las personas que están ahí que son necesitados, den flyers diciendo de que lo pueden ayudar con la renta. Eso ustedes no lo hacen porque no le conviene a ninguno.
To the people that line up at the food bank, you should give them flyers letting them know that there's rental assistance.
Mario Trujillo, a ti te deje de último porque tú, antes que tú saliera de Conce, tú, Mario Guerra, y el otro que salió donde estaban en el área tres, estaban festejando, y yo tengo prueba.
To you, Trujillo, and you were celebrating with Mario Guerra and the other council member that left office.
Mario Trujillo, tú eres muy amigo de Rick Rodríguez, okay? Y te voy a decir algo, acuérdate de dónde viniste, ponte los pantalones, ponte la falda bien puesta y amárratela bien y ayuda a tu comunidad, que tú no has vivido ni una...
Sí, ya se terminó su tiempo.
Tenga buenas noches.
Yes, to end, he said that Mr. Trujillo...
Need to do a better job representing the community.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Hello? Can you please state your name and begin speaking?
Yes, this is Edna again, and I choose to speak English since Frometa did not want to translate.
Go ahead.
So where I was getting at when I was rudely disconnected, you know, I've never been to any city or board meeting where secretaries just hang up on you. Ustedes son unos groseros. What I want to say is that voting is our inherent right, and it hasn't been so critical as this last presidential run. Need I say more? This is what Louis fought so hard for, our constitutional right to vote. So we placed two new council members on the city council, and one of them has been crazily and disrespectfully attacked week by week on the Downey Patriot, which we all know is a right-wing media outlet. And where all of you guys put your businesses, like Pacheco and Saab, and all of you, you're probably going to be next, Frometa. I think that that is not correct to make money out of your speaks. And it's a look at the zuela that Councilwoman Alvarez beat out whoever else was running. Because she has, she's not going to put money in her pocket. That's not what she ran for. She ran to help people. So shame on you for always trying to put her down. She's the only one there that I respect for being a Latina because you two women up there are sellouts. It's so sad. You guys don't even know what it is to be Chicana. So I suggest that you let Catherine continue with her work in the community. Leave her alone. Stop doing bad press on her. Mr. Patel, we already know your background, and I don't even know how you are still a prosecutor. I mean, answer that. How can you still be a prosecutor with your record? I am also going to contact the ACLU and so that they could be present at these meetings and so that they can see face-to-face how you guys treat your residents and how you hang up on everybody.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, Jessica Sandoval.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. First, I wanted to know why is there a block on the YouTube? I wanted to know, I wanted to be able to speak to the members of the city council. And I want them, I want them to understand that I'm speaking to them and I want to see them while I'm speaking to them. So I want the block that you guys have from the YouTube video and live, I want that block to be off. Because unfortunately, this is something that we have to speak as a resident in Downey for our concerns. So I need to be able to see the city councils. How do I know that they're sitting there? So I wanted to have an understanding of why did Liva just got up not even till I'm go and speak to Frometa. That's very unprofessional. On the minute of the community's concern. That's very unprofessional, Liva. So I want to speak, I want to actually speak about Patel, the attorney. Why is he a woman beater? He has a case in 2018 in the city of Downey. Do you guys defend people like that? That's an abusive man, and you guys are defending him? And also, I don't understand why, first of all, if Trujillo, Trujillo, if you're listening to me, if you're sitting there watching and hearing this, you should be ashamed of your culture. I'm from Jalisco, Mexico. I was born over there. Your mom suffered a lot over there. They know your mom, Ofelia. You should be ashamed. Trujillo, you should be very ashamed where you're coming from. All the struggles, everything that your mom been through. My family knows your family. And now you're residing in Downey? You supposedly helping the people in Downey? When people are actually trying to support each other as family? And you're saying that you guys, you, Trujillo, you, Frometa, and you, Liva, that you guys are helping the community? In which way?
I'm going to ask the callers to direct all the comments to me and not to the other council members, please.
I understand, but you guys refer to us as well. So we have the right to refer to you guys too. You guys are sitting in that district chair for a reason. So that's the reason why I'm my concern as a resident expressing myself. Because you guys stealing money too. You guys are fraud. Especially you, Liva, that you make 300,000 a year, not even a senator makes that.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, I would like to, again, in an effort in an effort to ensure we have transparency with our constituents, I will also request that council members joining us virtually also turn on your cams so that your residents and everybody can see you. I think it's important for our community to see us even if we are virtually. Thank you. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And welcome to your city council. Now, many people are complaining about the way you do your meetings. Now, for the past six weeks, every meeting, we've been taking and recording everything on Zoom. You never take when you raise your hand, and you never take comment from the public in violation of the governor's order. And when a person today made an expression, a constitutionally protected expression, they were taken and disblanted and banned from your meeting, from the Zoom connection of the Downey Municipal City. Then on your H77 dialing number, star nine is free, and you don't unmute and take public comment on that signal. So I would see that I believe we have overt acts, yes. What are you covering up over in Downey that you don't want to be seen? You don't want to hear from people? Let's go to goodies. Goodies, they had a real nice shopping spree of the cops known as pigs. Yes, back in December. Look at your package. I thought shirts were three for 47.50, not $1,200. And that's perfectly okay. The pit of pigs is a different habit. You've heard from Mr. Herman, you've heard from Mr. Wayne, and you've heard from Mr. Go. They care about things. The pit of pig, on the other hand, is a pig like you. I eat and eat and eat like Frometa does. And I fill my belly every day with delicious treats, yes. I'm going to make it to 40 years old and have a stroke, but I'm going to enjoy every minute of it, every milkshake, every Big Mac that I stuff down my belly, yes. But that's okay. Some of you want to live to be 70, 80, 90 in the city of Downey.
What are you doing?
Oh, I'm just giving public comments, yes. Please don't interrupt me, sir.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes, so again, I also attempted to speak at your close session meeting back in 530.
Time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Carlos Rannabar, resident of Second District. I'm calling to address the city council and Miss Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, my name, as I mentioned, is Carlos. I wrote the op-ed and rebuttal to a publishing in the Downey Patriot recently, written by B.J. Patel. My rebuttal outlined several parts where this barred attorney was making some inconsistencies in an argument against our council member Alvarez in her push for rental control here in Downey. I was very surprised to see that he is a barred attorney because it seemed like he may have forgotten some past relationships that might have pointed out conflict of interest.
This sounds like a private matter. Why do we have to listen to this?
In particular, the councilman previous to Councilwoman Alvarez appointing him to aboard here in Downey. And he failed to note that conflict of interest of having a contract with the city when elected and after his election. But now there's a, Miss Madam Mayor, there's also allegations of domestic abuse by this gentleman, and which I didn't necessarily believe, but now that I hear him talking about karma, while I'm not a practitioner, Miss Madam Mayor, of Hinduism or Buddhism, I believe karma is normally exacted in the afterlife. So in this case, with an elected official being threatened with the afterlife, I believe that's felony. And I implore the city, whether it's a city attorney, city manager, or anyone else, to take this comments by Mr. Patel very seriously. If he is threatening physical harm to an elected official on a public platform, as we see here in the city council meeting, this again is exposing the city to litigation, as is so often is the catchphrase that we hear in these meetings. So I implore you to take those threats seriously by Mr. Patel as we know that such comments can lead to actual action outside of these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, it's Rudolph again. So I just wanted to really highlight that, you know, one thing that we've been noticing in our Downey tenants union is that a lot of people are experiencing a lot more trouble than many people may realize. You know, this is just, the pandemic is getting so difficult for so many people. You know, we just passed half a million dead. And why did those people die? It was a policy choice by the government, mostly the federal government and the state government, but local government has a role in this. You know, government should actually serve to make sure that people are thriving and that people are healthy and are doing the best they can in their lives. So again, it's really important for you to understand everything that's in your power that could do good things for the city of Downey. I reject resoundly, and many legal scholars also reject the argument that cities cannot engage in the grand-scale attempt to reduce the mortgages, to cut those prices. Why in the world is it that during a local emergency that's been declared, as well as a national statewide emergency, why can't you bring down the prices of housing, something that's so essential to keep the virus from spreading? Why can't you bring those prices to zero? You know, you may think, oh, we can't do it, or the Constitution. No, the government has done it in the past. They did it during World War II. And we are now at that point. This is so serious and it's so shameful that governments up and down are saying, are pretending that they can't really do much to help the people to survive this pandemic. So it's time to actually realize your power and use it for good. If you don't, I am sure that the voters will replace each of you. It's time to help the people. It's time to cut down on the mortgage and the rent. Of course, it's possible. Be imaginative. Be the city that Downey's supposed to be. Imaginative, going to the moon. Okay, great that we've invested some in STEM education, which has helped children like myself with my PhD. But how about let's help many more and let's make sure we have a world in the future instead of just death and destruction from something like a pandemic and climate change? It's time to use all of the power.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thanks.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please. State your name and begin speaking.
My name is Alexandra. I'm a student in Downey. I've lived in Downey my entire life. And I just want to say, like, right off the bat, is I think it's really important that we have a real and certified translator so there's absolutely no language barriers between everyone when we are speaking. I think it'll just make everything go on a lot smoother. And I want to say from a student's standpoint, I want to thank you, Catherine Alvarez, for the beautiful work you're doing for Downey. And for the rest of you, as a student, you know, we look for role models in our community. And I think each and every one of you is doing a really bad job at your job. And I think it's really gross. And I think if you can't sit there for a couple of hours and listen to people, the city, the people that elected you, then you don't deserve the position you're in. And if it's that hard, Mario Trujillo, for you to sit there and listen to people and you get so offended and your ego is so shattered by what is being said, then you don't deserve the position you're elected to. Good night.
Please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello? Hello, is this better?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alfredo Bañuelos. And I just would like to express my sincere disappointment with how the discussion in the last meeting about the rent control issue went about. And it was just incredibly disappointing to see. And my expectations aren't that high to begin with. And this is not an attack at all. This is just the truth. And it's plain to see that I'm not alone, that so many people are seeing the exact same thing here with your repeated attempt at censorship and limiting free speech and that violating the First Amendment, Miss Frometa, specifically from you. And it's very uncomfortable to me, including to myself, to see how uncomfortable Mr. Trujillo gets at people's simple expression or at how badly you all seem to be trying to regulate the manner in which people can express themselves. You are not one to tell people how they can and should speak. This is the opportunity for the people to express their grievances to you, to tell you what they need, to tell you what they see. And you can choose to disagree with it, but for you to be angry and for you to- and for you to try to limit them and censor them in order that they be hung up simply because they speak like Mickey Mouse or they try to be comedic about it, that still doesn't mean that a lot of what that guy says isn't true or that a lot of what he says isn't what we're all thinking or what the community needs to actually look at or pay more attention to. I think Mr. Pacheco used to do a much better job at being tolerant and allowing people to speak their minds, allowing people to point out to the council what exactly it is that they needed to be seen and addressing. And it's just coined, I am extremely disappointed. Something as simple as mentioning, you couldn't even distinguish the difference between a mention and a use of the word. You can't even mention things because you automatically think that we're off subject. Mentioning is not talking about a different subject. And you need to pay more, pay more close attention to that. It's just extremely frustrating to watch this. Like I said, I'm not trying to hurt anyone here attacked, though you do kind of deserve it. I want you, my wish is for everyone on this board to really reflect what you're doing and how poor you're coming off. And if you really don't care, then just proceed with the way you're going because it's really showing your true colors if that really is the case. Thank you very much. You all have a good night.
Thank you.
It's been 30 minutes already? Okay. I just, I want to remind the members of the public, and I apologize if I'm coming across abrasive. I want to tell you that because our city is under a federal, state, and local emergency declaration, and I think I read this every time we begin the non-agenda public comment, it is really important for members of our community to understand that the way we are conducting our meetings is not the way we would like to. We really have to pivot during these times. And we only have under this federal, state, and local emergency declaration in Los Angeles County, Safer at Work, and in the community order. The time allotted for the non-agenda public comment period is set for 30 minutes pursuant to our Downey municipal code. Now, when people call our teleconference line, if the individuals are calling us about a different topic that is not what is at hand, our Madam City Attorney gives a warning, and then we disconnect. This is in an effort to bring our meetings to run more efficient. It is not by any means to censor our community. And certainly, that's not what we want. One of the other things that municipalities do, and I would like to share with you that Robert's Rules of Order is a manual that allows us to conduct our meetings in terms of what are the parliamentary procedures. And so as mayor or chair of this council, when anybody calls in, I ask respectfully to address any comment to me because I am the presiding chair or mayor of this city. Again, we are doing things as best we can. We appreciate the members of our public and our members of our community for calling and letting us know. I do want to address very quickly, before we close this session, that we do not control the media. And as elected officials, things may be said or written about us that we do not agree with. And sometimes, we definitely disagree. Now, the city of Downey has absolutely no association with our local media other than a relationship to disseminate information pursuant to what we're doing in the city. So if any one of us at any moment receives some publicity of some kind in the local newspaper, that really comes with the territory. So I know that members of our community called on a number of occasions this evening addressing that. And I need to make sure that you know, we don't control that. City council does not control that. So I will now entertain a motion to close public comment. Make a motion.
I can.
Let's take roll, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes. Okay, now, it is the time for consent calendar items. And members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding consent calendar items may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. And for those of you that submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record. And no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Again, for those of you that this is your first time participating, I know there were some other individuals that called in earlier. If you emailed us about a particular topic and your email is read into the record, you will not be allowed to speak. And so it's one or the other. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any callers on the line?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Yes, Mayor, I need to abstain from number one, please.
I also need to abstain from item number...
Actually, number two.
Approval of the minute says I was not a council member back on October 13, 2020.
I'm sorry, is it number two or number one?
Councilmember Alvarez, it's item number two.
Okay, number two. I'm so sorry.
Anybody else?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make a second. City Clerk Duarte, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved with councilmembers Trujillo and Alvarez abstaining from the council meeting minutes of October 13, 2020.
Thank you. Now, City Manager Livas, do you have any last comments for tonight's meeting?
Madam Mayor, I think I've said enough for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This city council meeting is now adjourned in memory of FBI agents Daniel Alphen and Laura Schwarzenberger, killed in the line of duty, Deputy Pedro Romo and Sergeant Armando Meneses, 25-year veterans of the LA County Sheriff's Department, who died of COVID-related complications. Dr. Mary Stoffer, longtime Downey resident, medical pioneer and philanthropist, and all the lives lost due to COVID-19. A moment of silence, please. Meeting adjourned.